Okay, welcome to the March 20th City Council meeting. I'm Rachel Maori. I will be presiding tonight in the absence of President Jarrett along with Counselor Elkins. This meeting and all participating in person and on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. The meeting can also be watched on Comcast Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube channel. I now will call the City Council to order. Roll call, please. Thank you. Counselor Dobbs?
Here.
Counselor Elkins?
Here.
Counselor Jarrett, we know he's absent and excused. Counselor Clemmer?
Yes, here.
Counselor LaBarge?
Here.
Counselor Maori?
Here.
Counselor Moulton?
Here.
Counselor Perry?
Here.
And Counselor Rothenberg?
Here.
Counselor President, you have a quorum. Okay, so we have three public hearings and public comment will be after the public hearings. So it'll be a little bit later. So let's start with our public hearings. The first public hearing is a public hearing on 24.212 Comcast petition to install underground conduit for cable service to 130 to 140 Woodland Drive. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Okay, motion made by Counselor Barge, second by Counselor Clemmer. Counselor Dobbs?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And Counselor Rothenberg?
No.
Okay. Okay, that passes, so. Okay, so we're on to the public hearing. I believe we have, is Derek here or is he on?
Miller is here.
Oh, Michael Miller, okay. On Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, would you like to say anything before we get proponents and opponents to make comments? I don't see them. Okay.
I did see him when he came in.
Okay, well, if you see him, we can.
You know what?
Yeah.
Just ask to unmute. Oh, I see. I'm sorry, I didn't make him a call.
That's all right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, if you just want to say a few words before we go to see if there's any comments or questions.
Sure. We've had two requests for service, residential service, one at 140 Woodland Drive, which is Habitat for Humanity. And there's also a lot next door on 130 that this work will service in the future without, for another petition. And then we also have another request for residential service at 589 Park Hill Road. So, you know, barring, you know, the weather and any approval here, we'll go through all the processes of dig safe and permits from the town as required.
And this hearing is only for the property at 130, 140 Woodland?
Right.
We have received your application for the petition for the other.
Right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so are there any proponents who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Any opponents? Let's make sure, I'm just looking online. Okay. Okay, councilors. Yes, Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, welcome. Anyways, I am the counselor in Ward 6, and I did two site visits over in that area. And looking with what I saw, and I saw the poll numbers, and then we're talking about an area of a sidewalk, could you explain to me very, very thoroughly of what that process is? I do know that it's for Habitat with putting the pole up and so forth, that I do know. And my concern is, the sidewalk area, is there going to be a curb cut back in there? Because there used to be one.
Yeah, we will come off the pole on Route 66 and bore underneath the driveway at the end of the road.
Yep.
And according to recent dig safe marks?
Yes.
There's electric line and Verizon line that come up next to the sidewalk with a street light close to where the driveway is going to be.
Okay.
So my plan is to, we have a, they can use a 12-inch bucket to dig between the sidewalk and that location without disrupting any curb. And then when we get up to the driveway, we'll have to go underneath the sidewalk again to their electrical transformer location. So without disturbing any sidewalk pads.
All right.
That's a simply fairly easy bore. It's usually like three or four feet to get underneath those sidewalks. So, you know, they shouldn't, you know, cause any disruptions with rising or settling of those sidewalk pads. It's just a bullet that shoots through and we push the cable underneath the sidewalk, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and just to ease a little bit, we are required by the state to do 30-day and one-year inspections on our trenching and public ways, so that's logged in with the state.
And also to the plant of the tree, you know that we have guidelines, what has to be placed around the tree and so forth, and I saw that you were doing that, and when I did the two site visits, I looked at that area and so forth. Okay, thank you.
There is already some tree protection there, but if we don't, if we get to it after that's taken down, we'll be responsible for putting it back up if required.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion to close this.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Barge, second by Counselor Moulton. Roll call. Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg?
Abstain.
And Counselor Dobbs?
Yes.
Okay, on to our second, on to our second public hearing on 24.213 National Grid Verizon Pole Petition for Park Hill Road. Yes, and we have someone from, we have Ken, I believe, right? Let me find Ken.
Good evening.
Hi.
Kenny Creagle from National Grid.
And yes, my name is Robert Idt, also with National Grid. I'm the community engagement specialist for the town and most of Western Massachusetts to answer any questions that might arise, as Ken is presenting.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us.
Do you want to just briefly say anything on the project, or I can just go to comments if you prefer?
We're looking to set one pole on Park Hill, 240 feet west of the center line of Woodyer Street, and it's to correct a long span of wire right now. That's twice what we typically shoot for right now. So the wires are hanging down a lot further than usual, and.
Okay. Yeah, well, I know we have some residents here. Well, first of all, didn't we open that hearing? No, we closed the other one, didn't open this one?
Moved.
We did open it. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Apologize. Thank you. One's a city councilor. Oh, who's the city? Okay. Counselors, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Moulton, second by Counselor Clemmer. Okay, Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg?
Yes.
Counselor Dobbs?
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Okay. Now we can do this. So proponents of the petition, or opponents, or just general questions and comments, please feel free to come up and ask your question or make your comment.
That puppy's out of here.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's great.
Can we speak on the phone?
Yes.
Nice to meet you, Colleen George.
Nice to meet you.
Okay.
Just state your name and city or town.
Colleen George. I live in Florence. It used to be Northampton, but it's now Florence. And it's 137, and my two neighbors are here also that are being affected in a kind of negative way by the obstruction of the pole. So on the corner of Woodyer Street and Park Hill is Pole 5. At my mailbox, which is 137 Park Hill Road, is Pole 6, and Pole 7 is across the street. So our thoughts were, we would like to have someone come out and visit the site so that they could see that there is a straight line actually from Pole 5 to Pole 7, which is a shorter distance than running it west and then south. So that was my thought, to get a site visit, and it was the suggestion of Mary Ann LaBarge, which was a brilliant idea, come out, take a look at it, and we could also express our safety concern about the multiple fires that have occurred on the power lines that go up Park Hill, Mary's driveway. There have been three fires in the last two years, which the fire department came out and put out, and then National Grid came and cut one branch. So it turns out that five years ago, they changed the protocol, or some time ago. So I lived there for 30 years, no fires, no problems with the wires. In the last two years, we've had many calls to National Grid. They tell us, next year we'll do it, next year we'll do it. It's been five years, and supposedly they're coming this summer to do it. So we're now wary about what they say they're going to do and what's going to actually happen. But it's because it's a south-facing hillside. South-facing hillsides, branches grow due south. So those long branches grow exactly over the power lines. It arcs down from the top power line to the other two and causes fire. So, you know, from sitting, standing at the sink doing dishes, I look out and within 50 feet of my house, there's flames. And we've had some dry spells. And it's very, it's a safety hazard, and I've tried to resolve the problem with the forestry National Grid person, and it has not resulted in any proper handling it. So to go 30 years and not have an issue, and then have an issue three times in two years, and when you call them directly, they don't respond. That's why I've had to resort, which I think is a real waste of manpower, to come out and have the fire department put out the fire. But it's very dry on a hillside as well, and it's a sandy hill. So, but that's my concern about safety. So when you say you want to put another pole, I get a little concerned. Also Travis, it would be a direct view from his picture window, that pole. So if you came out to the site and saw how the bend of the road bends left, it's actually a shorter distance to just, I don't know, you know, I'm not, I'm not an electrician, but I'm saying in terms of, as the crow flies, that's kind of what they usually use, that Pole 7 is across the street already. So is it possible? Best thing to do, have a site visit and take a look. That's my piece.
Yes, thank you. And before we go back to National Grid, why don't you, yeah, why don't you all just speak and ask questions?
Travis, I live at 95 Park Hill Road with my wife and three kids. So basically, like, I live across from a field in a raised ranch, and we have a big-picture window. So if they put that telephone pole in, like, my kids enjoy, you know, looking in the field at deer and animals and everything else. So if they put the pole in, that it's kind of going to be directly in the view of that. And then my next question is where they want to put the pole. There's actually a steel cable on the lines to a giant oak tree right there that's been supporting the line, so that's why I'm questioning the need for a pole. Because I've been there over 15 years, and we haven't had an issue, and now all of a sudden they want to put a pole right there. And then it would be like directly on top of Mary's mailbox, too, so I don't think that would be very good either.
And that's where the pile, for the driveway, that's.
Oh, they pile snow there, too.
Okay.
Well, it's just, it's been the way it is for so long, and I just don't understand the need to add a pole. You know, like, I get, you guys are saying there's a big distance between the one and the corner in her house, but that steel cable's been there forever, supporting the wires. So that's just, that's my thoughts on it, and, you know, I like the view of my field, and I just don't want to lose it.
Okay, are there any more residents before we bring these issues back to National Grid?
Mary Drummond? 185 Park Hill Road. I'm the one with the long driveway with all the poles. And in 1972, I had to pay for those poles. They only gave me two. I had to buy three. But anyways, like Colleen said about the fire issue, way back, they'd come every other year, when we, when I started complaining and said, you know, they would come and just spray the vines. Then they, they would come, and I'd call, I said, well, a branch broke, it's hanging on the wires at the top of the driveway. They came, got it off, cut it off, and he says, no, we're going to send a crew, but we have to get a, you know, a big truck up here. I said, no problem, and we have to get them. I said, no problem, and we have to get them to mulch all the branches. So they just leave everything there, but they just don't ever come back. And it's been years. And I've spent thousands of dollars cutting the stuff on the, on the wires and myself. But it's just, it's just crazy now that they don't, you know, they don't get out there. They, they come if you call, they come immediately, National Grid, and they'll, you know, cut it off the branches, and I just don't want to lose power. And until six months ago, my husband, who needed oxygen and lived at home, now he's at the veterans home in Hollyoke, but I didn't want to lose power.
Right.
So, and we do lose power quite a bit, quite a bit, whether it's the pine tree coming down on Park Hill Road and, you know, for a day and a half. But that's our only concern. We just want it to be safe for everybody. And the wire that Travis is talking about in front of my driveway, trucks couldn't get up with deliveries because it was hanging down. So they came and they put a wire, and it's pulled right up, and it's never been a problem. Higher. But.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Welcome.
We're going to check in with these concerns back with National Grid. Yeah, do you all have some?
Yeah. Don't get anything to me that you find better.
So regarding the pole location.
Yeah.
I'll speak to that, and then I'll defer to Bob as to tree trimming, frequency and policies.
Yeah.
Anything in the area of that pole, I'll speak to. Essentially, we're putting the pole directly under where the wires are now, halfway between them, because it made sense from the external designer who designed this, the wires are already there. The easiest, cheapest, simple construction is to put a new pole right under the wires that are there, rather than relocating the entire pole line across the street for several more poles. And then additional guying and anchoring on the adjacent poles, pulls into abutting yards, which we need easements for. So going in a straight line, there's less equipment in the field, and it's an easier construction for us because we don't need to run new primary while the old stuff is still in place. The poles that are being installed, the one pole specifically where we are petitioning for, that pole is going to be about 10 feet higher than the poles that are there now, the adjacent poles we're also replacing. So all the additional height, the five feet on the sides and the 10 feet on that pole, we are doing tree trimming there. There's a significant amount of tree trimming, but further down in pass fires, so I'll have to defer to Bob on. And we can, we do have the ability to tweak the location. Ideally, center works for us because weight is even, but we are somewhat flexible in moving it left and right, moving it across the street, we would have to look at, because that adds, could add significant costs and potentially easement issues.
We'll talk about tree trimming, and then we'll go to councillors for questions.
Yes, I do.
Well, did you want to, you're just going to, yeah, thank you. And is it, is it green?
I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to hear me speak. I apologize, some people hear me speak way too much, my colleagues included. That being said, I'm going to hit just a few topics that you folks brought up tonight, and your concerns are truly valid, we understand, honestly. There's a few things I do want to address that are kind of public comment, because it is important for everybody to be aware of this, especially if anyone has any type of life-saving issue at their home, anything that requires power to be on on a regular basis. I do want to make it clear that if you do notify us through our customer service, usually you have to get a note from a doctor, you get marked into our system as a 911 priority. So if there is any type of outage that does occur, you do get a priority. It goes life-saving, then it goes into outages, and 911s are there as well. So I do want to make sure that that, everybody is acutely aware that there is that opportunity. We do care about all of our customers, and I do apologize for any reliability issues that you have in the past. I cannot speak specifically to the fires that have occurred. What I will say, and I will coordinate with the fire department on this, if any issues do arise in the future, please make us aware of it. We'll communicate that with, with our forestry team as well as our operations teams. When it comes to forestry work, we have two different types of forestry, I'm going to say buckets, if you will. The first one is a circuit trimming program that is on a five-year iterative basis, where we go and we take care of all the trees that are along a circuit, along the path of the line. With that said, we do have to maintain a specific clearance around our lines, and that has to be acutely taken care of. The other aspect of it is what we call our hazardous tree mitigation program. So if there is a tree that is, you know, showing concern of potentially falling or causing serious damage to our assets, please make us aware through customers, yeah, customer service line, or if a town official, please get ahold of myself or National Grid's Forestry Department, we'll come assess the situation and come out and take a look at that. For pole location, one thing I did want to add is, National Grid's priority is to ensure that we have the least cost to our ratepayers, and that's why we're looking at installing this pole where it is. When you don't have that pole within the, in the vicinity that's at, when you have that long span, there is other hazards that come about. One that we don't take in consideration is ice and wind. So that wire that goes across has a specific diameter, and that's like a sail when the wind blows. If there's ice that accumulates on that, that surface area increases, essentially causing like a larger sail, and that could cause the wind to take that back and forth, which potentially could cause arcing, because the wire, you know, increases the length, swings back and forth. So this strategy will mitigate any type of essentially swinging of that wire, putting it a little bit better in location. For pole placement, I do apologize for the specific location. What I can say is, the one thing about poles is, after a while, we do tend to forget that they're underlined in the site. I understand you've been looking at, you know, that field for a long time. It's going to be a change. It is going to be hurtful for a little bit, but it does drown out after a while. So I do apologize that that's going to be a site obstruction for you.
The support cable's not sufficient anymore?
So the, so the support cable thing, I did want to mention that. It's not National Grid's practice to attach any type of support cable to any type of vegetation. We do have guy wires that go to the ground, and we do have, what's it called when there's a pole that goes across?
Sorry.
Sorry, Laura Kelleher, she's our.
Hey, guys, just go to the microphone, though, because there's people who are listening who can't hear, and if you, I will entertain a follow-up question, but just go to the mic, so.
Apologies for not coming up earlier. My name's Laura Kelleher, I work for the third-party attachments team at National Grid. And one of the things that I do is assist our engineers that work outside of our company on projects. So, you know, I did make myself aware of your situation. And one of my biggest concerns when we have attachers, so the majority of the attachers that are low on that pole, that, I'm assuming those are the ones that actually have the wire that's attached to the tree.
Okay.
To pull it up. So those are communications lines, they're not National Grid's lines.
So the power line's the higher one?
All the high stuff is.
So it's above the support cable, so it's.
Yes, so our concern though is, so essentially Verizon's our joint pole owner.
Okay.
My biggest concern is that when I saw what their survey showed, they're under 15.6 as of the summer, which 15.6 is the minimum that you should be at for NESC over any roadway, any driveway. So in order to get to that 15.6, we do need to go higher.
Laura, can you explain what 15.6 is for the audience?
So 15.6 is essentially the minimum road clearance that's required throughout the country, on highways, on roads, and it is an NESC requirement. Verizon does now have more stringent requirements, and we still see to this day, a lot of times, I know, I saw on the news the other day, a wire got clipped, took down a pole, and, you know, the pole ended up on somebody's house, you know, it's, those are, my biggest concern is, I don't want, I don't want the poles to come down.
Yeah.
And especially, you know, there's Amazon trucks driving all around, and, you know, they're driving around in snowstorms, and.
Yeah.
Everything sags more. So that's kind of my biggest concern with it.
How long has it been like that, the way it is?
Hey Travis, just come up to the mic, though, because councillors.
Yeah, I'm just curious on how long it's been like that and how long that cable's been there, because it hasn't been an issue. Like, I've had an 18-wheeler back into my driveway with a delivery, and it cleared the lines and no problem, so.
Understanding that situation has occurred in the past, although the current standards that are at play force us to address the fact that that does exist, which is one of the reasons that this pole petition is occurring. So, understand that situations in the past have occurred, but they weren't to the standards that are, you know, are present, we're aware of it, and we're correcting that now.
Okay, I'd like to see if councillors have questions, because I bet Counselor LaBarge has some good ones.
Oh, yes, I.
We're ready.
I know I talked with you, Frank.
Yes.
I told you, I requested a site visit. Nothing, no call, nothing, and I'm upset about this. What I heard, my resident of concerns of the three fires that she's had in her site area, and I'm taking this serious, and I'm requesting again, again, with my mayor here, that that site visit be put in place. For my three residents right there, I want to be there with them to make sure they are safe, their children are safe, and I want to see also with my resident of concerns of how it's going to affect them with their home. And I'm not taking this lightly when I requested a site visit, I was ignored. Don't do this to any councillor, please. We deal with our residents by heart for safety right down the line. And to not hear anything, I am again requesting, please, please, a site visit.
So we were notified, I believe the abutters were also very late, it was earlier this week when we heard about it, and I reached out to the designer who works for Laura immediately, and due to the amount of time, it was less than two days, we can't get them to come out here from Boston to go meet with the abutter. So we thought bringing it up at the petition hearing where everyone is present was a better option, and if it has to get tabled to discuss the location, we're okay with that. We are addressing your concern, but we couldn't get the specific designer with all the information.
Okay, but we can hold this back.
Yeah.
To do that site visit.
Absolutely.
Okay, I want that done. When you're talking about the residents, I don't care what ward they're in, and there's fires.
May I ask a follow-up?
I have a hard time with those.
Yes, please, yes.
Oh, thank you, apologies. Madam councillor, I understand your concerns, truly, and that's one of the reasons that I'm here today, as well as Laura's here today, and we truly hear you. We are going to establish a site visit. The questions that you're raising from a safety aspect, we understand completely. There are going to be certain limitations for what we could do based on our, essentially our ability to do work. We can only remove trees or vegetation within a specific distance of a line, and then also when it comes to essentially visual, I can't change the way that something's going to look. I, we're going to place a pole where it's the safest for our customers, we care about them as much as you do. I can guarantee that. I would like to have that site visit with you, with our engineers, to ensure that everything's okay to your standards, and anything that we can remediate, I want to ensure that that's done. We do hear you, and I apologize.
Okay, I have concerns.
I understand.
All right, and I am hearing about trees and branches also in my ward, the road right down the line.
Okay.
They're on the wires. When do you go and check?
Counselor LaBarge, that's not this petition, though, so let's.
I know.
Okay, but we really need to stick to this petition.
I know that, but I'm using this as an example, councillor, okay?
Okay.
It's a problem. I'd like to know what the schedule is of trimming limbs.
Trimming limbs for a circuit, for a circuit which is a feeder, so it comes out of a substation and then it permeates through a community. We do those on a five-year basis. If there's any trees that you see that are potentially hazardous, we will look. If you see any issue regarding a limb that's near a line, a limb on a line, et cetera, please, I will, I will give you my contact information. I will coordinate you with our overhead, our forestry supervisor, to get the information to you there as well, and also any work with the tree warden that you have in town, any coordination that happens there, we will ensure that it's reviewed, removed, and resolved. I can guarantee it.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And you are heard, and we understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, councillor Moulton.
Yes, thank you. I think because, although this is a hearing about a pole location, I think that I heard that one of the reasons why you're proposing the new pole is due because of low-hanging wires that exist now. I think the safety concerns are very relevant, and I support Counselor LaBarge's call for a site visit, which I think should have happened before this hearing. And I, I wanted to ask Counselor LaBarge, who else from, what other city officials do you think should be part of that site visit?
They all can.
No, I mean, there was just a mention of the tree warden, should, is, you know, who would you like to be there?
Whoever they want. I want my three residents here tonight.
Yes.
And I want them to be able, with them, to walk the site, take a look of his concerns about the pole. This is all new to me about the size of a pole also. My main concern is with Colleen, with three fires, three fires because of limbs. And tonight, I'm hearing, five years, they come out and check. I think you should really look at that, if possible. It's, I know, it's like, it's echoing.
Oh, do you hear an echo? Yeah, I don't know why it's doing that.
But that's my concern.
I understand.
Okay, is safety here.
I agree with you 100%.
And the mailbox, all right, it's bad enough, residents have, there's no sidewalks, no sidewalks. Okay, so we need to look at that. That it's not going to affect their mailbox, and hearing the length, and I know my resident, the long driveway, okay, and the wires and so forth like that.
So, just.
Counselor.
So my point, councillor, is, I think it's, they've been responsive, there will be a site visit, you'll be there, and I was suggesting that if you feel there are any other city officials that ought to be there, that you coordinate that with, with the mayor.
Okay, I see that councillor Elkins has her hand up. Yes, councillor Elkins.
Hi, I'm supportive of continuing this hearing. I don't think it's a tabling. Do we need, would that be a motion to continue the hearing to the next date, so that there, we can do this site visit?
Yes, I believe yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
In which case, I would move to continue this hearing to, to the next regularly scheduled meeting to give time for that site visit.
Right, thank you, councillor.
So motion made by councillor Elkins, second by councillor Moulton.
Two weeks? Is two weeks enough time for you to meet? Perfect. Yes.
Mayor, 6:30. Could I ask you a question? I want to talk with the mayor, I am hearing buzzing.
Oh, okay. Well, we were about to vote on continuing the hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
But I know councillor Moulton questioned about somebody else being involved possibly. Right, councillor?
Well, no, I just wanted to make sure that you were satisfied that the proper city officials, in addition to yourself, would be invited to this because of the safety concerns that the residents have raised.
Exactly.
Wanted to give you that opportunity.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Probably, what, mayor, the fire department?
Yeah, okay. So there's a motion on the floor. The other councillor. Okay, okay, let's take a roll call on that motion to continue this public hearing.
That may till April 3rd, the next meeting, at 6:30 PM. Okay, councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Move on, I think he's not there, yeah.
Captain from the vote. Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Counselor Dobbs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins. And councillor Clemmer.
Yes.
Okay, so that's been moved to April 3rd. Thank you, National Grid Verizon folks, and thank you for the residents for coming down and, and letting us know what's going on. Okay.
Do that now.
Okay, so we don't.
Councillors, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
No, this is the notification.
This, yeah, I believe that. Okay, thank you. So procedurally, we don't have to close.
Site visit, she means, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
She meant continuation.
So procedurally, we don't have to close the hearing because we're continuing it and we voted on that. And just, I think we could, yeah, I think you're right, Counselor Elkins, that we could have gotten to the item later and then tabled it, but I think this is better to continue it, so thanks for that. Okay, moving on, last public hearing. So the last public hearing is to, is to consider the FY 2026 water and sewer rates. So may, may I have a motion to open this public hearing?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Clemmer.
Okay. Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Stepped away.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Counselor Dobbs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay. So I believe, oh, yes.
May I have permission to share my screen?
Yes, yes, do you need permission?
I think I've made her a co-host.
Okay, great, yes. Thank you.
Do I have some questions for that?
So Counselor, when you're ready, Director LaScalia is here.
Okay, in the room? Ah, yes, welcome. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, Counselors.
Hi.
Hi. So, thank you for the, I was hiding behind the podium.
Yeah.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here to present information about our water and sewer enterprises tonight. I have a 20-slide PowerPoint that I will move through as quickly as I can. So we can move to the first slide. Thanks, Charlene, for, for running it. Donna LaScalia, I'm the Director of Public Works. Okay, so I will start with an overview of our water supply system. We have three surface water reservoirs. They are Ryan, West Whately, and Mountain Street, which hold over 1 billion gallons of water. We have an extensive network of transmission mains which bring water from the reservoirs to our water treatment plant, and then from the water treatment plant into the city. I'm going to talk a little bit more about our transmission mains in a moment. Next slide is a map of our water distribution system. We have 135 miles of distribution mains throughout the city, two wells which supplement our water treatment plant during times of high flows, like if we have a fire somewhere in the city, and three water towers in Ward 6 and Ward 7, all of which are out of service and are scheduled for decommissioning in the coming year. So when we talk about utility rates, it's common to hear comparisons to other communities. But the reason I start the presentation with these slides is because it's really important to stress the scope and the scale of our infrastructure, which is fundamentally different from many of the communities around us. Treating surface water from reservoirs is a much more complex and heavily regulated endeavor than treating water, say, from, from other sources like a well. So our water treatment plant was, next slide, please. Our water treatment plant was constructed in the early 2000s, and it has the capability to flow more than 6 million gallons of water per day. So we track our flows year over year, and they're reflected in the chart on, on the left. Our water enterprise rate structure is heavily based on usage, so we don't get paid unless we're making water and we're selling water. So it's important to note the decline in usage over the past two fiscal years. And you can see the numbers both in millions of gallons and in percent annual change. And that is due to reduced flows from Coca-Cola. Next slide, if you would, please. Lot of numbers on this slide, but it shows our expense budgets within the water enterprise over the past six years. So the water enterprise is a closed financial system. It is supported entirely by user fees. The money in needs to equal the money out, and there is no financial support from the general fund. On the left-hand side of that table are all of the components which make up the budget. Personnel and maintenance increase each year due to collective bargaining agreements and inflationary pressures. Debt service has been relatively stable since 2008, as I mentioned when the plant was constructed, and it will hold at this level until 2028. Indirects to the general fund are used to ensure the enterprise is paying its share of health and property insurance, and portions of salaries and benefits for general fund employees like the city council, finance director, and mayor. Other than ordinary maintenance are things like vehicles, water meters, fire hydrants, and transfer to capital projects and transfer to stabilization are self-explanatory. Usage rates in this enterprise have not changed since July 1st, 2019, when they were adjusted upwards by 2.5%. Base rates were altered on July 1st, 2023, to account for the loss of revenue from Coca-Cola. But the overall bottom line, shown in yellow on this slide of the enterprise, has been completely static for several consecutive years. So as external pressures cause operating costs to rise, our only option is we have to increase salaries, as we have to increase operating expenses, we have to cut capital. There is nowhere else to move. The only thing we can do is cut capital investment to fund increased expenses. Next slide, please. Coca-Cola's announcement in 2021 that they were going to cease operations in the city by the summer of 2023 required us to study alternative ways to replace their revenue. Coca-Cola was the single biggest water and sewer customer in the city, nearly a full 25% of water and sewer enterprises. So this announcement was economically devastating on many levels. On July 1st, 2023, in preparation for their departure, we implemented a new base rate fee structure, raising the base rates for water and imposing new base rates for sewer. The usage rates did not change, so they have been the same since 2019. The cost impact to the average user was $128 annual increase in their water bill. That was the only adjustment that we made to rates. This slide shows a snapshot of the math behind this base rate decision. And the reason I've selected these fiscal years is because these are actual numbers and they are not estimates. FY '22 was the last year of what I would call normal, stable operations at the Coca-Cola plant, where we could expect that we were going to get $1.5 million in revenue every year, and that was just sort of something that was automatic and had been going on for decades. By 2023, their usage had begun to taper, and when we built the budget for FY '24, we had to anticipate $0 in revenue from them per their announcement. They told us they were leaving the city. So as the table shows, we shifted their lost revenue, and I will note, we shifted it quite successfully to the base charges to stay at consistent revenue level. All we were trying to do was make up the lost revenue from Coca-Cola. We didn't adjust anything else, we just needed to make up that lost revenue. And you can see by the table that our estimates were actually really accurate, and that's why I wanted to show accurate numbers instead of like mid-year numbers. Coca-Cola's departure was delayed, as everyone is aware. So in FY '24, we received 900, a little bit over $933,000 in unanticipated revenue from them. For this year, we have received $461,000 in unanticipated revenue. So when we built the budgets for these two fiscal years, we were anticipating zero. That's how we had to build the budget. But they're still here, and that's the revenue that we received. So the important thing to note about this is we were consistently getting $1.5 million from them. They're still here. We got $933,000 in FY '24, and again, year-to-date, we're a little over $450,000, and that's a pretty up-to-date number. So their usage is declining heavily. So we have to build a balanced budget that's sustainable through June 30th of every year. We can't rely on the possibility that we may get this unanticipated revenue. It's unclear what their plans are, but we have to prove revenue for DOR. So a lot of people ask us, well, what did you do with this money? You got this extra money, so what have you done with it? So if you could go to the next slide, please. This is not a comprehensive list, but these are highlighted projects that have been completed over the past several years. So all of these projects take many years to develop, design, and implement. The next generation of projects is currently in development. And if you just look quickly at the bottom of this slide, the $5.6 million total, you know, these projects add up very quickly, and they certainly exceed our available budgets that I showed on the prior slide. In January, city council approved several transfers from retained earnings within the water enterprise into our capital projects. That gives us greater flexibility to address the deferred maintenance in our system, and it relieves the pressure on the budget for the coming years. If you move to the next slide, please. I always mention every year that I give this presentation that all of our enterprise operations are heavily regulated by DEP and EPA, so that's the Department of Environmental Protection and the Environmental Protection Agency. We have comprehensive asset management plans. I spoke about the next generation of capital projects in my capital presentation a couple of months ago, and these are the highlights of what I spoke about at that time. The price tags on these projects are extraordinary, and they're at the bottom of the page, and they require financial capacity that will be challenging, given the pressures on the enterprise and our goal of stable rates in spite of Coca-Cola's instability. So that is our primary goal, is to create stability in our enterprise and in our rate structure for the public, regardless of a variable income stream from a corporation who may or may not stay in North Hampton. We have to provide expected stability for the folks who are users of our water system, and they need to expect, you know, not to have to deal with major fluctuations in their utility rates year over year. And I'll also mention, it's critical that, we have to have some level afloat within this enterprise to address emergencies which are common and can be catastrophic. Since July 1st, we've had 11 water main breaks, including a really terrible stretch between Christmas and the end of January, where we had seven. So every time we have a water main break, it's disruptive to our customers, our system, and it actually destroys our roads by undermining them and creating a scenario where we have to truck in hundreds of yards of gravel and try to, you know, recondition the road and just stabilize it until we can try to pave it. We actually have a break now on Riverside Drive at Milton that we have sectionalized, and it will need to be excavated when we have a little bit more favorable weather conditions. But it's a break that we know about, that's in the middle of that intersection, that's going to have to be dug up within the next couple of months. So these breaks can cost us upwards of $30,000 to repair when they happen. It depends on the type of pipe, it depends on the location, how deep it is, and we need to be privately financially prepared at any time. So some quick math on this, you know, seven water main breaks, you know, in like a four-week stretch is, is pretty pricey. So if you go to the next slide, please. My final comments on this enterprise are to show Coca-Cola's overall impact on the enterprise as a percentage of total enterprise revenue. What's notable in this graph is the tailing usage. So though they remain in the city, they are not operating at anything close to previous levels. When we look at FY '26, though they have indicated they may remain in North Hampton through December, we're projecting their revenue at around $300,000, but it's unclear if this projection is even a reasonable number. And so when we build the budget, we have to have solid revenue projections. If we get to the third quarter and we just don't have the revenue, we have to cut. We can't just run a deficit. We, we have to have a balanced budget, we have to be able to prove revenue, and we have a level of instability with Coca-Cola where we cannot be relying on, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars that we may or may not get. So now I'm going to shift to the sewer enterprise. If you could run through these slides for me. So like our water system, we own and maintain extensive infrastructure, including our treatment plant, 110 miles of sewer collection, and seven remote pump stations which pump wastewater from areas of the city where it cannot flow by gravity. We also receive and treat the wastewater from the town of Williamsburg. So if you go to the next slide, please. The treatment plant on Hockenham Road receives all of the wastewater in the city. During excessive rain events and snow melt, stormwater infiltrates the sewer system and mixes with wastewater, and all of it has to be treated as wastewater. Last year, we treated 1.5 billion gallons of wastewater, but like the water enterprise, you will see that what we treated has dropped. And again, this is due to decreasing flows from Coca-Cola. Next slide, please. So this is a similar chart to the one for the water enterprise. All of the components of the budget are the same, and like the water enterprise, the bottom line in yellow has been unchanged for several years. What I want to call your attention to in this slide is the debt service amounts, which are climbing significantly, or have climbed significantly. So that debt service line is the third one down. So if you look at those numbers for FY '24 and FY '25, they are starting to get big. And they are getting big because we are putting tens of millions of dollars in investment into our wastewater treatment plant. So the only relief within this budget is going to be to decrease capital investment or to use some of the money that we have saved in order to offset this increased expense. So we're dealing with nearly $30 million in upgrades. The debt service on that is going to double, and we are going to need relief, financial relief, within this chart in order to back into that bottom line number in yellow. So next slide, please. This is a similar slide to the water enterprise. Prior to 2023, there were no base charges in the sewer enterprise. When Coca-Cola announced their departure, the base rate charge was meant to replace their lost revenue, and again, like water, we did so quite successfully. These are actual numbers, and our projections and rate schedule were nearly spot-on. We were trying to replace their revenue of just over $1 million, and we raised $1 million. And that's called really good rate setting. So the impact to the average residential user for this piece of it was $115 a year. Usage rates did not change. The only thing that was different was the imposition of base rate charges to make up that million dollars in revenue a year. Again, impact to the average residential user, $115 a year. We could not have, again, anticipated that Coca-Cola would continue their operations, and as a result, just like in water, we collected unexpected revenue, about $631,000 in FY '24, and about half of that to date this year. So again, like water, a lot of people say, well, what have you done with the money? Just like water, the sewer enterprise is a closed system. All the revenue stays within the system, and it has to be used for expenses associated with the enterprise. So on this slide, it shows, you know, again, a sampling of the large projects that we've done within the sewer enterprise. We're in the midst of a $20 million upgrade to the wastewater plant, which is obviously a fairly large project, and that comes on the heels of a $12 million upgrade, which was completed two years ago. So I pointed out the increasing debt service on a prior slide, and these projects are the heavy drivers of that debt service increase. So the reason I total all these numbers up, and, you know, you get to $37 million, you know, that $37 million is more than six times the value of the enterprise, which is $6.1 million. So just like is in water, there are more projects to be considered. I mentioned that 1.5 billion gallons of wastewater flows to the plant every year. Deferred maintenance on our sewer lines actually causes the stormwater to flow into the sewer system. You could just move to the next slide. That's a regulatory problem, and it has operational and financial consequences. So we have to continue really aggressive efforts to address deficiencies within our sewer lines, many of which were installed in the 1800s, so not even like the 1900s, but the 1800s. On the right is a picture that was taken in Ward 3. We're doing really aggressive sewer lining work there, particularly in the neighborhoods off of Market Street, where we have considerable stormwater flowing into the sewer system. And so what we're doing is, rather than excavating and replacing sewer lines, we're actually lining them. It's like a V-cured liner, we go manhole to manhole, decreases the diameter of the sewer pipe just a little bit, but makes it, you know, nice and smooth and, and basically solidifies that pipe so that we don't have to dig a 12-foot trench down the middle of, of Market Street, you know, which is obviously extremely cost prohibitive. So next slide. Final comments on this enterprise are to show Coca-Cola's tailing usage and the projections for revenue this year and a portion of the next. So, you know, again, though Coca-Cola remains in the city, their revenue is fractional relative to what it was several years ago. And, and again, we're using it to offset increasing expenses within the enterprise. So if you go to the next slide. For FY '26, we propose no changes to either the base rate fees or the usage fees for water. All of them are shown here. Next slide is the sewer rates. Again, we propose no changes. This is the same fee schedule that is currently in place now. If you go to the next. If you go to the next slide, please. Last year, we discussed income exemption programs for those households which fall within the income guidelines, which are shown on this slide. If residents feel that they meet these eligibility requirements, they should contact the assessor's office for more information. Applications are accepted on a rolling basis throughout the fiscal year, and if eligible, all the base charges are waived. So if we go to the last slide, if you would. I'll end with a slide showing all the employees in the Water and Sewer Enterprises. Our treatment plants and operations are required to have 65-day-a-year coverage. These employees work nights, holidays, weekends, and they work under extremely adverse conditions. So I want to publicly thank them for their service to the city and for providing really critical services that all of us rely on. So thank you. Concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Director. Okay. If you're in the room or on Zoom and would like to make a comment on the public hearing, the Water Sewer Tax Rate Public Hearing, we're having public comment after this hearing is closed. But if you have a comment, you can raise your virtual hand or just come up and speak. Let's see. Hi. I just, yeah.
I'm Nick Modern. I live at 16 Strong Avenue, and I'm really glad that you showed the pictures of the workers because I think everybody really appreciates the quality of the water and the dependability of these services. So thank you.
Thanks, Nick. I'm not seeing, yeah.
Hello. Bob McGovern has been at Packard Restaurants in 1977, and I just want to add to what the gentleman said. We take water and sewer for granted. You know, you drink it, you flush it. Where does it go? All those things that they say are flushables, they're flushables, but they don't disintegrate. I have two below-grade injection systems. Recently, Restaurant Depot has changed their manufacturer for toilet paper. And guess what? It doesn't disintegrate. It wraps around the pump, and then I get a call at midnight going, get your boots on, it's coming up again. So I can really appreciate the work of the DPW and the planning department because it's a problem that's not going to go away, and I can imagine that the wastewater treatment plant maybe has six inches or a foot of these things that just float around that don't go away. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a public comment on Zoom.
Yep. Can you just say your name and your city or address?
Yes, hi. My name is Colin Huffmeister, and let me start the video to us. Trying to do that before I got locked down. My name is Colin Huffmeister, 25 Phillips Place in North Hampton. Thank you for the presentation. I learned a lot, and I can appreciate that it's very challenging to manage this budget. What I do find interesting is that, you know, you use the words market, sell, and there's declining usage, and at the same time, on our city website, it says that we need to cut back on water. So I'm just trying to understand this balancing act of we need to cut back on water because it says there's a water shortage, yet the rates need to go up because a big company is using less. So I guess it's a very profitable enterprise for the city to sell water, and what efforts are being done? And I know the Water Department perhaps can't, you know, answer this, but what efforts are being done to recruit another business to help kind of shore this up? Because it seems like really an unfair burden for citizens to use less water and to be charged more for it.
Okay, thank you. I'll put, well, I'm going to take a few more comments and questions, and then we'll circle back to the Director, and we can address some of the issues that you brought up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Director, I'm not seeing any other hands right now. If you would like to address any of that, and if the mayor would like to address the business aspect or whatever, thank you.
Sure, I can address the usage. So we have a Water Management Act permit that is issued to us by the Department of Environmental Protection, and we have very specific metrics that we have to follow when we declare water use restriction. So water use restrictions are used to conserve the natural resource of water in times of drought or stress on the aquifer. And our permit is very prescriptive about when we need to declare a water use restriction. So the conservation efforts that are mentioned on the city's website, and actually, when you go onto the city's website, there is an emergency alert banner across the top of it that says we are in a water use restriction. And we are in a water use restriction because we are in a drought, believe it or not, in this part of Massachusetts. So those restrictions, again, are part of a permit process that is, a permit is issued to all public water suppliers, and we are no exception.
From the state, Director?
Yes.
So it's a DEP.
DEP, that's what you said.
Thank you. Yeah, hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. So in terms of trying to get another sort of large water user in there, we have been trying to work with Coke basically since they announced that they were leaving. So we've had many meetings with them, we've asked to be involved in the marketing, we've been asked to be told what their plans are, and we've had some success at times. They're, you know, they're a little bit secretive, and obviously, what they've said their plans are has changed pretty much every year. We did successfully get the Secretary, the Economic Development Secretary, Howe, and under Secretary to, over to Coke, and did a tour last year, I think it was. And so they've been in there, and they are looking to be able to sort of market it as a great place for a business to move in, and hopefully one that would also use water and sewer. So again, it's just, it's been very challenging because Coke's plans keep changing. So, you know, we've asked repeatedly, as soon as they know for certain, and we can be involved in helping to market it or know what the plans are, please let us know. But it's been fluctuating a lot. But again, also Congressman McGovern's office has been really involved, the two senators have been very involved. So we've had, over the last couple of years, we've had a lot of conversations with folks and have gotten people in to do some tours, and it's on everyone's radar. And now we're just sort of waiting to find out what Coke's plans are and hope, again, that they will let us be involved in any decision-making or any sort of marketing that they're going to do of the plant.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Let's just check. Councilors, do you have any questions or comments? Oh, let's see. Councilor Moulton.
Yes, thank you, Director Skalia, for that detailed presentation. I wanted to check on the next-to-last slide, which was about exemptions. The income limit was labeled 2025. Is that the, is that the limit that will be in effect? Will that carry over for the next fiscal year as well?
Can I bring it up?
Yeah, would you mind pulling that up? That might just be a Scrivener's error on my part, and if so, I apologize.
Oh, I'm coming.
Yeah, that should say FY '26. So that information came from the assessor, so that's FY '26.
So, no, it's actually, it is 2025, if I may jump in. So that amount, which I'm trying to pull up, I'm trying to get back on the Zoom. Oh, here it is. Let me share. Share. Oh, come on. Share. And, whoop. Okay, it's fine. So it is 2025, and you can still put in for your abatement up till April 1st. So the abatement is for this year's taxes, which is FY 2025, the current year that we're living in. And so yes, those amounts will change or may change. They are given to us by, from the state, so they may change for FY 2026.
Okay, and so then that information would come from the assessors?
So yes, for FY 2026, you can't apply until after July 1st.
Yes.
But yes, you can contact the assessor's office, and they would give you the new income limits.
Okay, that's useful. Thank you.
Council LaBarge.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's make sure I can see.
I was just wondering, because we have a look-on program for seniors and so forth in the Center, and how that, oh, come, we don't have that for this program.
And we'll talk about this a little bit later. That, I mean, that's a different program. That's for real estate tax. And so these are programs that are available by the state. We have to, the state has to sort of grant the ability to have these programs. So this is a different sort of state program.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I just address, so if you are actually eligible for the exemption, 41(c), you are automatically exempt from the CPA, and then you are also automatically exempt from your water and sewer charges and for half your stormwater charges. So if you apply and you meet all the eligibility requirements, you also automatically get exempt from those other things.
Okay, I see Council Rothenberg has a question, but just to clarify for residents, if, how do you do, how do you apply? You go to the assessor's office?
Contact the assessor's office.
Which is on the website.
Which is on the website. Their number is 413-587-1200, and you can also do it in person, 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you. Council Rothenberg.
Thanks. This question can go to Donna or Charlene. The way that I'm understanding your presentation, just trying to sort of keep up with you in real time and so many hundreds of words, it sounds like to answer the major question our constituents had, you did an accurate estimation of replacing what would have been Coke's revenue, and you adjusted our rates to just that point where it matched their normal revenue. So that worked out as you expected. And then using the figures that you read tonight, it sounds like you got about $2.3 million of revenue from Coke that wasn't expected, that couldn't be depended on, but did end up showing up in the past couple of years. And so what happened with that money is it's basically been put towards sort of capital projects that are really expensive, right? We have these huge projects that we're in the midst of or have just been finishing. And so my question for you that I just want to be able to give my residents to help fill them in further is, I'm hoping that either of you could tell me more about what's going on with our reserves, so what we already have in savings there in the enterprise, and also how that, in your mind, in your planning, interplays with your debt service, any debt that you already have out. So in other words, do I have $15 million here in the bank? And it looks like it's available, but I've also taken out a $15 million loan, and I'm hoping to pay that off quickly with the $15 million I have in the bank? That's the sort of information I'd like to have, if you would.
You want me to answer? So I think our biggest goal outside of providing reliable services is providing a reliable, stable rate structure. And we don't want to be back here every year saying, we need 5%, we need 10%. We want to be able to show that chart exactly as we showed it with a consistent bottom line that is reasonable and that we can fund the needs of the enterprise with. So yes, you're correct. Over the past two fiscal years, we have taken in unanticipated revenue, and that gets voted by council into capital projects. So I was just here, I think, like six weeks ago, and we voted money to like fire hydrants and granular activated carbon and, you know, just these sort of capital necessities within the enterprise. So in terms of stabilization balances, the beauty of having a solid stabilization balance is that it can be used to stabilize rates in times of high debt service. So we have a really solid sewer stabilization balance of about $12.1 million right now. But we just finished a $12 million wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and we're in the middle of a $20 million wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So the debt service for that is going to expand to a level that the $6.1 million annual enterprise actually cannot support it. So we will need to do an annual, or we will need to look at doing an annual transfer from stabilization into the budget when I come here in May to actually fund that budget to support the level of debt service that we are going to be taking on. So the goal behind the $12.1 million may seem like a really big number, but we actually have $32 million in debt that is about to be outstanding, that is going to come due. So the goal behind the accumulation of this stabilization money was to be able to take that money and to stabilize our rates so that the $7.86 a CCF everyone is paying can actually stay like that. The water stabilization balance is not as high, it's only at $2.4 million. The good news in the Water Enterprise is that the debt service for the water treatment plant will fall off, but it will be replaced by debt service for the transmission main, debt service for repairs that we need to do to our reservoir dams. So we will have to be really strategic in how we transfer out of stabilization in order to balance our budget. We certainly have more flexibility in sewer, but we have higher expenses in sewer. I hope that answers your question.
That does, thank you. And this is maybe for Director Nardi. Can you talk about whether debt exclusions are an option for any of these projects?
No, these funds do not come from the general fund. These come from the enterprise, so we would not do a debt exclusion. A debt exclusion allows us to increase the tax rate for a specific project for the duration of that project or until the loan is paid off. We are not paying these from the general fund, we're paying them from enterprise funds, which are not from taxes on real estate and property, personal property.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilors, I have a, let's make sure, I have a couple of questions from residents that I think you've kind of addressed, but I'll just read them. Can the Enterprise Fund itself borrow and invest, or are the loans and interest hitting the general fund? And I think what you said was that they would have, they would come from the stabilization fund if they had to do that. Is that what you said?
So water and sewer are both closed systems.
Right, so.
They do not touch the general fund. So any debt that's taken on by the Water Enterprise is funded completely by the Water Enterprise.
Okay. All right, I've got another question from resident. Since the city has collected significantly more water and sewer revenue than expected due to Coca-Cola staying longer than originally planned, is there any plan to provide relief to rate payers? For example, a calculated rebate for each year that Coca-Cola plant stayed beyond what the city planned for when it raised the water sewer bills?
And I think that that's a valid question, which I have tried to answer in my presentation tonight, and I think it just bears repeating that our goal is stability within the rate structure. We made this adjustment in 2023, and I don't want to minimize the impact of that additional, you know, $100 a year for water and $100 a year roughly for sewer on users, on residential users within the city. If we started looking at doing rebates because, you know, okay, well, we've gotten an extra $600,000, our rate stability starts to become a little bit more questionable, and we may have, you know, this excess unanticipated revenue, but we actually have to look at the revenue we're receiving from other users, like not just Coca-Cola. And that revenue is actually decreasing because we spend a lot of time in water use restrictions that are required by permit, which means people can't wash their cars and power wash their houses. can't wash their cars and power wash their houses. So what we're seeing is a trend where residential non-Coca-Cola usage is actually declining in a way that is negatively impacting our revenue totally outside of Coca-Cola. So if we started contemplating, well, you know, we've got this excess revenue from Coca-Cola, which by the way, is only like 30% of what it once was, and you know, we want to sort of mail everyone in the city a check for $10 or $15 or whatever the per rata share is, you know, when we look at next year, we may have to make decisions around adjusting rates to make up for water usage which simply isn't there on the residential or business side. So in terms of providing rate stability, which again is the goal, the best thing for us to do is to hold at this point.
Okay, thank you. I have, I have one question of my own, but I just want to check online. So if we, if Coca-Cola had left right away and we still needed these capital projects, then it would have to be debt service or use some of the retained earnings, right? So this is just helping us use less, to take out less debt or use less of the retained earnings within the enterprise fund?
That's correct. It's definitely relieving the pressures on the budget. It's allowing us to make a heavier capital investment and pay that debt service in a way that is relieving the budget. And of course, the debt service is capped at 20 years. So for each month that they continue to be here and we're getting this unanticipated revenue, no matter how small it is, we're getting closer to paying that debt off and again, being able to afford the rate payer's stability, which is, which is what we're trying to achieve.
Okay, right. And you know, that was such a, that was a good point that the mayor made, that it's hard to find a new business when the old one's still hanging out there. Okay, counselors, let's, any, if there's, are there any further comments or questions? If not, we can, I'm looking for a motion to close this public hearing.
Move to close.
Second. Okay. By Council Moulton, second by Council Clemmer. Okay. Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg?
She stepped away.
Counselor Dubs?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Maori? Yes. Okay. The public, that public hearing is closed.
Can I just ask a quick?
Yes.
May I let Director LaScalia go? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know the order is later on, but.
Oh, right, right, yes. No, that's fine. Thank you for being here. It's nice to see you.
Okay, okay. Thanks, counselors.
Okay. Yes. And how are, how? No, that's okay. I just didn't know if you guys wanted to point before we start public comment. I know.
I mean, it's gonna be an hour and a half, but like to think of it.
Okay. I know, well, yeah, I don't know. So hey, thank you for your patience. We're just going to take a, let's say, how about an eight-minute break?
Yeah, that's right.
They'll keep you on your toes. Eight minutes, then we'll start public comment. Thank you. On my mic. Eight minutes, and then we will start a public comment. Thank you. Okay, welcome back to City Council meeting. We are on to public comment. Thank you for your patience. If you've been waiting for our public hearings to end. So if you wish to make a public comment, you can sign up at the podium, or also you can raise your hand after we, and I'm going to alternate as a, as usual between Zoom and in the room. On Zoom, you can, if you can raise your virtual hand, you can try raising your actual hand and I will look for it. But if you can raise your virtual hand, that's better. And again, you know, two, we, the council limits comments to two minutes, and after two minutes, we will ask, I will ask you to finish your sentence. And according to council rules, we do not respond during, during public comment. And you can speak on any topic. Okay, so let's look at, so in the room, we have Dan Brindell. And yeah, just your city or your town or address.
Oh, all right. Starting my time now? All right.
Yeah. Got it, Dan?
I've given some documentation to some of the people here. If anybody else would like to see some, I have a couple of other copies. The clerk should have it for anybody who's at home. My name is Dan Brindell. I'm here again to urgently urge you to correct the zoning of lots 32A 170 and 32A 197, where O'Connell now plans to build a big construction. This is across the street from the church that they also own. To do so would protect Phillips Place and the Pomeroy Terrace Historic District. If you look, sorry, this paperwork, I was very fortunate to talk to actually a lot of you the past two weeks, and you gave me a lot of understanding of this issue, which I did speak to two weeks ago. I think I now have a lot more of an understanding. If you turn to the first page, you will see this is the mock-up that O'Connell presented to the neighborhood. This was for many of us, the alert that residential restrictions were lifted from this zone across the street and that it would enable them to build this. If you turn to the next page, you will see as late as 2021, one of those zones, which is 32A 197, was still zoned URC residential. There's a close-up of that on the page following that. That was actually changed by this council two years ago through the form-based code, although I would guess that this council did not realize that you guys lifted the residential restrictions on that lot. That's because the only mention of that lot within this is rezone parts of URC to CB side. Turn to the next page, it's this map in which the nature and extent of the rezoning is hidden by grouping CB, URC, and OI businesses all together. If you turn the next page, you will see this is actually a close-up of the lot being changed. This was the only way that you guys and the public were notified to the specifics of this zoning change. And you will note, lot 32A 197 is not here. It is not labeled. Both of these lots are labeled 32A 170. The seven actually conceals the borderline in between the two. That makes it look like this is a central business zone.
That's time if you.
It's a central business side, side street zone.
That's time.
If you could just finish your sentence.
Keeping with PNS's presentation and many of the things that they said to this council. However, that actually was not what happened. I don't think you guys were given proper oversight over this issue. I don't think the public was.
Thank you.
I think that needs to be done. And I think the only way to make sure that happens is for you guys to file an amendment to the zoning.
Excuse me, that's time. That's time.
Stop talking. I'm going to keep talking so you can't because your time is done. Sit down. Thank you very much.
I'm just finishing the sentence, but.
That was a very long sentence. Thank you. Okay, on Zoom.
They're defensible zones. They can defend it.
Please stop talking. Please stop talking right now. Thank you. Okay, on Zoom, we have Lee. Let me see if I can unmute you. Nope, I have to unmute. Okay. No. Where should I go?
I'm here.
Oh, good. Thank you. Great.
Wow, I couldn't see myself in the room. My name is Lee Graham, 89 Marion Street in Ward 1. Thank you for the chance to make a comment. I actually just wanted to thank the city council for the special meeting last week because I think it really showed care and concern for the, for our public sector workers, for the, the city staff who work tirelessly for our city every day. I, for my day job, I work with cities all over the United States. And recently read something that describes cities as the workforces of the kind of federal government structure that we have in the US on the frontlines, the first place that folks go for help with things in their lives and always doing more with less. And so it's really, we really need public service at the local level, and it's just been, it's a tough time for everyone. And so I just really wanted to say thank you to the city council for looking out for the, the whole city and all of our staff. And, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Okay. In the room, I see Robert McGovern again. Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, Maria.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Quickly, Madam Mayor, I would implore you to perhaps think about a trial run for picture Main Street. I know you have your heels dug in and you're pretty much committed to doing what you say that the public wants, but I don't think they want that. It's called Northampton. It's not called Wayne's World. And I'm talking about bicycles.
So directed to council.
I'm talking about, well.
I know, but, but this is a council meeting.
To see the mayor.
I'm sure she can hear you.
I'm, I'm talking about bicycle lanes. I'm talking about taking away 63 parking places. People aren't going to bicycle into Northampton. I mean, they tried it in Cambridge, and now they're, they're trying to get rid of some of these lanes in Boston right now. It's not a good idea. Number two, the purchase of this church up here for 3.5 million, absolutely ridiculous amount of money, where the fellow across the street paid 1.1 million for St. Mary's rectory and a big parking lot. Not getting an RFP for that building. We're talking 5 million to make it usable. And when it's usable, all it's going to do is bring more homeless people, more people that are panhandling into downtown, which is a scourge right now. And I'll tell you, I've been here since '77 and I have never seen it this bad. It's bad across the country. But I don't want to put the welcome mat out for people from Boston, Springfield, Connecticut, to come to Northampton. Taking down trees, 26 trees, there's nothing wrong with those trees. You can talk to any arborist and all they want to do is trim them. It's sort of like getting a haircut. Saplings, yeah. Saplings, yeah. You can sit on them 25 years, Marianne and I will be dead.
That's time if you could just finish your sentence, please.
I can keep going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Can you just state your name and just for the records?
Robert Ed McGovern Jr. I'm not related to Marianne.
Oh, boy. Thank you very much. Okay, so on Zoom, we have Nan. Let me see. Nan, can you unmute?
Yes.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. 50 Smith Chapel Street. For those who missed it, commentators at last school committee called for the mayor to apologize and order to be censured for disparaging remarks she made against accommodations for persons with communication disorders. Of course, it was near essential. When a then city councillor had angry outburst at council and yelled "Shut it up, Chapel Street" to residents trying to stop another gentrification attempt, he would no call for censure or even an apology. As a matter of fact, the city actually cut his comment out of the video to cut a horn. The central councillor, Rockland Ward, was nothing but a cheap election-year stunt. A repented city councillor who actually knows her job is to represent the people must be stopped by any means necessary in a city that has been run into the ground by the same powerful regime since the last millennia. The centre charges the over-the-top reaction and the ending of the call was ludicrous and worthy of a crew of junior high bullies. The centre was a display of power intended to turn the public against the councillor who represents the people of a ward with passion instead of serving the mayor and the power pole. I am here to tell you, you failed. Outside of the mayor's usual strong-town advocates and a few others, the mayor and most councillors who railguned like toddlers in a tantrum about this call being the worst thing in our history only hurt themselves. Give us a break with the drama. Stepping out of line and supporting the people against the mayor's agenda will be retaliating against. You will be pulled off powerful committees, face a primary challenge or worse. People who speak up can lose jobs and housing. Those who do the mayor's bidding make it better housing, jobs for themselves or their kids. That's what's disgusting. And it will go on to revive more brave souls like councillor Rockland Ward and support them as they support us instead of bowing to power and money. People who bow to power and money do not deserve our respect or our votes. This is why our government does not work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nan. Let's see, in the room, we have Nick Mottern. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Stop.
Yes, hi, I'm Nick Mottern. I live at 16 Strong Avenue in Northampton. I'm a member of Demilitarized Western Massachusetts and Chapter 413 of Veterans for Peace. I'm wearing a T-shirt that I wore with, along with four other colleagues, wearing this T-shirt yesterday when we protested at L-3 Harris Corporation here in Northampton. L-3 Harris in Northampton is part of a conglomerate called L-3 Harris Technologies that has, you know, I say basis corporation facilities worldwide. Here in Northampton, they make periscopes and optical targeting equipment. In other places, they make parts for nuclear weapons. They make parts for killer drones. They make parts for surveillance systems that are used at the border and to deport people as well as in Gaza. Earlier this week, Israel began bombing again 2 million people in Gaza. These people, unlike people here, had no electricity. They had no potable water. They were living in sewage. They were living in rubble on the tops of the bodies of their families and now they are being bombed again and slaughtered again. The ceasefire is over for people who don't know that. And this is our problem. This is our money that are paying for these bombs. There's a law against us. This is why we went to L-3 Harris to say there is a Leahy law. There are other laws that would prevent the bombing of the people of Gaza with US weapons. And that is not happening. We have a cowardly Congress. We have people here who prefer to look the other way while this is happening and it's horrible. And so I call upon a city council to issue a statement saying that they want this bombing to stop, they want these weapons to stop. You've already voted for that. Now we need people to stand up and we need people like you to stand up. Secondly, Demilitarized Western Massachusetts and other groups here are going to be calling on you repeatedly to evict L-3 Harris Corporation from Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Let's see, online, we have Eve Glazier. Can you?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yep. Good evening.
I live in Northampton, Ward 3, and I just wanted to follow Nick in grounding us in the excruciating reality that this week Israel shattered this ceasefire deal, launching dozens of airstrikes, killing over 400 Palestinians. With the Trump administration in power and full support of Netanyahu's genocidal ambitions in Gaza and the West Bank, the situation is truly horrifying. With Trump in office, there's no possibility that Israel will face any accountability for its crimes against humanity from our national government. So it is all the more important that we do all that we can as a city to exert economic pressure on a local level to end these grave human rights abuses in Palestine. For us here in Northampton, we have two powerful ways of exerting this pressure and shedding our own publicity in the genocide in Palestine. The first way is commit to divest our city's financial holdings from companies that are directly aiding and abetting occupation and human rights abuses in Palestine. Municipal divestment was a key piece of ending apartheid in South Africa and I hope that Northampton will lead the charge in committing not to fund genocide. The second way, of course, is to shut down L-3 Harris, our backyard weapons manufacturer. That's a branch of a corporation that makes parts for nuclear missiles, bombs that drop in Gaza, surveillance technology used on the US-Mexico border. This does not align with my values as a resident and this does not align with an existing executive policy order that bans ties to the nuclear weapons industry. The CEO of L-3 Harris recently penned a letter to Doge urging Musk and Trump to completely and totally deregulate the weapons industry so they can be unabated in making more and more profit off of killing. Please use whatever mechanisms of power that the city has to stop L-3 Harris and ban weapons manufacturing in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. Okay. Nathan Chung in the room. Good evening, Nathan.
Thank you. Nathan Chung, Northender resident. Just want to announce an event I'm hosting on April 5th at the Forbes Library Community Room, 11 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. It was originally going to be a civics workshop event, but I thought maybe a more broader topic discussion about increasing complexity in our society, increasing distractions, how we can come together as a community would might be more beneficial. So I titled it, let's see where's the title, Coming Together in a Time of Increasing Complexity and Distractions, Community Dialogue. I got some time still. So I want to share something a little bit personal. So as you can tell from my dialect, I'm Korean, actually I'm Korean-American. I was born in the United States, but I spent four miller times in South Korea. A lot of my childhood was in South Korea. What's happening right now in Korea, if you've been keeping track of international news, on December 3rd, the president declared the illegal martial law to try to take over the whole country. He sent soldiers to block the legislature from voting down the martial law, which is their constitutional right. And of course, citizens ran to the building to prevent that from happening, but the soldiers themselves, they realized that this is an illegal order. So soldiers themselves, when they passively obeyed. So the illegal martial law that could have taken over the country by storm, there were actually torture plans. They were planning on kidnapping some of the legislators, key legislators, and torturing them and basically taking over the whole country. That didn't happen because there was a shared understanding of the Constitution, shared understanding of the law, and shared understanding of a community as a people, common mythology, common language, common stories, which unfortunately, America lacks. But that doesn't mean that doesn't have to happen here. We need to come together with a common understanding, common story. If we don't have them, it's time to create it. And this only can happen if we have a common understanding of the law also. And I just want to tell people that other countries, these things are happening because there's understanding and we can do better as a community and as a nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, back on Zoom. Colin, I can't tell if, oh, it's Deb, oh, I'm sorry, Deborah Yaffe?
Thanks.
Okay, yeah. Good evening.
Video. I guess it's disabled. Yes, I'm Deborah Yaffe. Hold on just one minute. Oh, my video is disabled, but okay, there we go.
Try again.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you very much. Deborah Yaffe from South Deerfield, Massachusetts. I spent a lot of time in Northampton and one of the things I admire about Northampton is the value statements that the city of Northampton has made. And I'm here to also comment about L-3 Harris Weapons Manufacturer, one of the largest in the world, that's just up the road on 50 Prince Street. And is, as Nick Mottern had said, is, you know, involved in the development and production of nuclear weapons systems. And Northampton adopted a wonderful resolution calling for the US to pull back from the brink and prevent nuclear weapons. It's something I admire. Mayor Narcoitz issued an executive policy order requiring the city to reduce and eventually eliminate any and all ties to nuclear weapons and industry. And also, our current mayor supported that in 2023. So how do we address L-3 Harris that is engaged in nuclear weapons? How do we kind of reconcile that? One thing that comes to mind is a lot of municipalities, when a large company is coming into their town, they'll have a public meeting, a community meeting, that allows the public to ask questions, for L-3 Harris to come and answer those questions regarding their business practices and for elected officials to be there because they are part of this community. And as you can see, as you've been hearing for several weeks, we are upset about it. Lots of people that live in this area don't even know what L-3 does, makes, that they're even in the neighborhood. So holding a community meeting to make them accountable and so that we can address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. There's more people on Zoom, but anyone in the room? I'm done with the sheet, but if you have, okay, let's see. I saw, I see Ben and then I see somebody, Ben Spencer, would you like to come make a comment? We'll get to everyone. I should probably put this back.
Hello, everybody. Benjamin Spencer, I live in Northampton. First off, I want to thank Donna LaScalia for the excellent presentation she gave tonight and just in general, thank her. I've just been sort of continually impressed by her professionalism and I think we saw that reflected in the special city council meeting that was, occurred a week ago, the way she addressed situations around a particular phone call, I thought was really well handled. And so I really appreciate that. The other thing I'd like to touch on would be in response to Mr. McGovern's comments and I'm happy to talk to him anytime about Picture Main Street. I've been getting to know people on the Pardon Our Progress campaign regarding Picture Main Street. They're doing everything to reach out to local business owners to help make sure that they understand the benefits of this project. I think Mr. McGovern, if he had a chance to really hear why this project is going to be so beneficial to the city, he might come to understand that this is something that is long overdue. And to try to make sure that people are aware, the project is about safety and it's about safety for people in cars, people who use mobility devices, people who are walking on the street, people who are trying to cross the street. So this focus on separated bike lanes is misplaced. And I just, I'm compelled to say that because it gets brought up continually and there's really no reason to single out cyclists as being somehow the reason why we're doing this. It's simply not the case, okay? Many people can access our downtown in all sorts of ways. They're all users of our streets and they all deserve a chance to use those streets effectively. So I'd be happy to talk to anyone about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Online, we have Colin Hoffmeister. Let me unmute, are you unmuted, Colin?
Yes, I am.
Hi. Yes. Good evening.
Thank you for having me again. I want to make a public comment about the O'Connell development at the corner of Phillips Place and Holly.
Colin, would you just state your name and your city or town for our records again? I know you did it earlier, but.
I'm Colin Hoffmeister and my address is 25 Phillips Place in Northampton, Mass.
Okay, thank you.
So my comment, a lot of neighbors, you know, are very upset about this development that O'Connell has proposed to build this 50-foot-tall, I'm not even sure how long, but a very, very large building that will really be a wort on the neighborhood and really overburden the street, Holly Street and Phillips Place and Butler with overflow parking. And it's already strained at this point. I was very surprised, I missed the community meeting where they presented this and when I saw the sketches, I nearly, not to be dramatic, but my heart skipped a beat. I mean, I was shocked that this could be considered in a residential neighborhood. The original plan was to build three duplex condominiums, which sounds great, you know, provide some nice housing. I don't think anybody was really opposed to that. Of course, you wanted to have a look and feel the neighborhood. It's a historic neighborhood, the homes are all built in the 1800s. And this apartment complex is really not appropriate. My neighbor, Dan, made a very compelling case about how the zoning was kind of changed. And I do think it's from this form-based code, which probably like anything, has its pros and cons. And I know Councilman Moulton, I think in 2022, you had consulted with the city of Canton, Connecticut and to learn about this as they adopted this, a much smaller city of about 10,000 people.
Colin, if you could just finish your thought, because time's up.
Well, the tenet of this was that it's, you know, this type of zoning is to preserve the character of each district by adopting area-specific criteria. And that apartment building does not do that.
Okay.
The tenet of that also says established zoning that's appropriate for the district.
Okay.
And so I would plead with all the council members to not approve this, certainly approve, you know, three duplex condominiums.
Okay, thank you, Colin.
My house is right next to it and I think you need to.
Yeah, that was time, Colin. Thank you, Colin. That was time.
Next to my home, we look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so in the room, I think there was, yes, hi. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Kim Higgins and my husband and I started a firefighter's MC in Florence. We have applied for a Bino license to start, we have, we raised money for 29 Hilltown Fire Departments and we also do scholarships for the Smith Vocational. We call it a blue collar scholarship and we give students $500 towards their trade. So I'm not sure if anyone has any questions for me.
They don't engage.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I didn't know what to do.
Yeah, so that's a later, yeah, that's a later.
Right?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation. Okay. Back on Zoom, I see Lisa Modenas. Good evening.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, good.
Okay, Lisa Modenas, Florence. In the budget and property meeting earlier this week in regard to IEPs, Director of Student Services Matt Holloway said, quote, "There are factors like economic resources, cultural capital, educational background that can impact families' abilities to advocate for special education needs." He then added that, quote, "This could lead to some students able to access disproportionately larger amount of services," end quote. Absolutely, the capacity of families to advocate for their children is affected by their cultural, linguistic, financial capital. This is why I and other school funding supporters have consistently, cuts are equity issues. However, to say that families who advocate are taking away from other students does two things. One, it pins special education families against one another and we're not going to do that. And two, it blames families for why the district isn't doing its job of supporting all disabled children. If the district did its job, no one would need to advocate for special services for our children at all. If the district did its job, all of our children would have equal access to a free and appropriate public education. If our elected officials did their jobs, and I include the superintendent here, they would make sure our budget was equitable and none of this would be an issue, but they have failed at their jobs. But they have failed at their jobs. This month marks the 35th anniversary of the Capitol crawl, in which over 50 disabled activists crawled up Capitol steps demanding the passing of the ADA, helping it to become law. Stating that some families are not able to fight for their children, and that's why they're not getting services, or blaming some families who advocate for services for why other families aren't getting them, is to openly admit that our district is violating the ADA and not serving certain populations of children. It's systemic racism, classism, and ableism. It's inequity manifest. There's nothing progressive about that, Northampton. Budget cuts are equity issues. We've been saying this for a very long time. Please fully fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone in the room? Okay. Are you, let me see if, let me see if it's on our end. Does this help? Try, try again. Okay, there you are. Yes, great, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Usually I speak on advocating for my students, because I think that's very important, definitely to fund our schools. Tonight, I am actually speaking for myself, as well as a colleague of mine. There are two things that I would like to say. The first thing is, Council Dubs, thank you so much for giving me a positive response in hearing what I was saying and why those things were so important to me. The second thing that I would like to say is while definitely my and my colleagues' records are public knowledge, then my Facebook and how I address myself on Facebook, due to my students always trying to find us on, on Facebook, TikTok, or Instagram, because they can, because they think it's fun, to change my name. Nobody knows me other than Marissa Wallace, because that is who I am. That is how I present myself in this forum, and how I present myself at school. Not to be called by something that I do not go by, that is not my name. Now, that being said, I have asked for an apology for myself and my other, and the counselor who did that. Nobody responded. This is very important, because I am honestly the only Black person that stands in this spot on a daily basis. And as far as I'm concerned, calling me by names that I don't go by, and referring to my, as, and going through my records, which I don't, again, don't care, in a gotcha moment, is not something that I am comfortable with. And I am saying, this is racism, and I don't like it. I'm going to make that very clear. I'm calling out what it is. I have seen ableism, I have seen this conversation talk about...
Marissa, could you finish your sentence? Thank you.
Yes. Who have said disparaging things about myself and my colleagues, and I don't appreciate it, nor as it deserved, because I go in every day, and I deal with those children. You don't, and haven't stepped into a school to see it.
Thank you. Thank you. On Zoom, we have Meg Robbins. Let's see. Okay, good evening.
Hi. I'm going to speak a little bit about history, and I'm Meg Robbins, Word Four, and I'm going to share a little deja vu local event from 12 years ago. It's called the NHS Rally for Creativity, which happened on March 20th, 2013. When hundreds of Northampton High School students walked out of the school to rally for their school's future at the Unitarian Church lawn, students held signs that read, "Music has given me a voice, please don't take it away." They spoke about their concerns that budget cuts threatened the arts and music programs at their school. The school committee was faced by a $1.2 million gap and potentially cutting away nearly 24 positions, including an art teacher at the high school, as well as cutting back on the hours of some positions. One of the students said, "Arts have had such an impact on my life, I want to make sure that this continues for others after I graduate." A 15-year-old sophomore held a sign that read, "Don't erase our fingerprints." Mayor David K. Narcoitz was at the rally, it was held just outside his office. He said he was there to listen to the students. He held a series of town hall meetings to listen to residents about the fiscal 2014 budget. "This is great," he said of the rally. "They love their school, they feel passionate about it." His daughter, Emma, was there in the crowd. He said the city was struggling with the budget gap and was addressing various ways to bridge it. This was 12 years ago, those students are now in their late twenties and thirties. Some are city parents with children they hope to educate in our city schools. City council voted then to amend the fiscal 2014 budget to reflect an additional $2.5 million by an override. $707,315 of that was used to create an override stabilization fund. And that, councilors, was the beginning of the fiscal stability plan, that was so successful that we now have mountains of cash, because we stayed this fiscally conservative course for beyond its need. 12 years of overestimating budgeted state spending, annually underfunding schools despite that 2013 election year mayor-only gift, and putting the resulting on...
Meg, if you could just finish your sentence, thank you.
...what are now four city stabilization funds. Thank you for your creative attendance to our children.
Thank you, Meg. Okay, I think we just have one more. We have Mike Stein. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mike Stein, Columbus, San Antonio, Northampton. I have two comments related to the special meeting that was recently held. The first is that there seems to be tremendous conflation by the council between what norms are, laws are, protocols are, and rules are. And I would behoove you all to clarify going forward, when you are evoking violations of anything, you actually cite what is being violated and how it's being violated. I found it very troubling to hear things like, "First-chair councillor is not supposed to do anything but follow the league." That's a norm. I don't know that that's in the charter, it's not in your rules and procedure, certainly not in state law. I think we need to be careful when we package all these things together and imply that violations are happening without being really specific about what they are. The second thing is, I was really heartened, actually, to see your newfound protection of city employees. It was amazing to see you come to the defense of employees and really worry about their mental health, really worry about their feelings. And in light of the year of public comments, complaints, begging, and sharing of traumas, personal and professional, that the MPS staff has given you, not to mention the 96% vote of no confidence that that staff gave in our superintendent, and that the Western Mass Federation of Labor rescinded their endorsement of our mayor, it seems to me that since you're so committed to workers, you'll likely now opt in in order to hear a budget request from us directly, as the current proposal requires more cuts to full-time employees, and requires reductions to colas and steps. So I'm really excited you're now concerned about city employees. I know you want to be consistent and extend that concern for all city employees, and you're definitely going to be fighting hard. I'm glad you're sort of performative politics of councillor force, the smart community...
Mike, could you finish your sentence? Thank you. You can finish your sentence, but I just... Okay. Okay, thank you, Mike. All right. I think we are done. Okay, so we are done with public comment, and we're going to move on. Thank you. Thank you again for your patience. Public commenters, all right, so. So we have, next would be, let me just make sure I'm in the right place, announcements. Yeah, announcements from councilors and the mayor. Councilors. What, oh, oh, okay. Oh, Council Dubs.
Thank you, Council Mayor. Yeah, I'm very excited to announce that this coming Monday, March 24th, at 4:30 p.m., there's going to be a special meeting with the City Services Committee.
Oh, Council, could you just speak up a little bit? For some reason, it's kind of faint, and I want to make sure we can all hear about it. Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you, can you have it better?
It's better, yes, thanks.
Okay. Yeah, so this Monday, March 24th, at 4:30 p.m., there's going to be a meeting with the City Services Committee, and Chief John Cartlidge and Director Donna LaScalia are going to be attending for a discussion about the snow ordinance, the snow and ice level ordinance that we have in Northampton. So I just wanted to say that I'm really grateful to them for, for being willing to have to, to be, being willing to come to our meeting and have this discussion. And so, yeah, and it's going to be in person in the council chambers and also on Zoom, so anybody that wants to attend, I'm just very looking forward to it. So thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Oh, Council Labarche, did you have your hand up?
Thank you. Just a reminder, Sunday is the Hoyok St. Patrick's Day Parade, and that is this Sunday, March 23rd. And you know what? Let's take a look at St. Patrick's Association, what they do for the city of Florence. Absolutely beautiful, beautiful. Mostly all the holidays, they work tirelessly, they're volunteers and all. So please come out and help us on Sunday, St. Patrick's Day Parade, and come and support Northampton, Florence, and Leeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I see Councilor Elkins has her hand.
So Saturday, March 29th, down in Springfield at the Mass Mutual Center, the Springfield Thunderbirds are, is Loop Memorial Park Night at, at the Thunderbirds game. And you can, there are $25 ticket rates for all Loop Park members, family and friends in the community, and also you can get a little cheaper concessions, and so that's something that's going on that benefits our Loop Park.
Nice.
It's a good way to spend Saturday night.
Okay, cool. Councilor Moulton.
Yes, thank you. I actually will piggyback on two announcements that have already been made. One, I expected Councilor Elkins, who is often reporting on sports, to mention also that the Smith College Women's Basketball Team is playing tonight in the, the National Semifinals, playing University of Wisconsin Oshkosh. For the third straight year, they're in the National Semifinals. The other, I also want to piggyback on Council Dubs, thanks for announcing the special meeting of the Committee on City Services next Monday. In addition to the, to the sidewalk ordinance, we've also asked the DPW director to address some questions about staffing and how that affects the ability of the DPW to respond to winter storms in a timely manner.
Right.
And I will also take this opportunity to announce that the organizational meeting of the, the new ordinance review committee that I am serving on along with Councilors Dubs and Perry will be 5:00 p.m. on the following Monday, March 31st, and that is an all-remote meeting, correct? Laura, that's on Zoom only.
Okay. Oh, yep, Council Perry, good evening.
Yes, hey, everybody. Well, if you know me, I'm all about performances and sharing the love of those, and the Power of Truth Festival is coming back again, it's going to be the fourth annual, one of those, it is April 4th and 5th. And while we do have a council meeting right before that, I want people to just have some time to prepare, plan. It's going to be at Bombix. It's featuring a bunch of amazing artists, rock is coming, a good friend of mine, Acrobatics, performing, the poet Reginald Wade Betts is a headline speaker, and it's thrown by Michael Fidel every year, as well as Usman Power Green, who happens to be the Chair of our Reparations Committee, will be speaking. So if you want to know more about that, you can go to bombix.live, it's B-O-M-B-Y-X-l-i-v-e, and hopefully see you guys.
Thank you, Councilor. Mayor, do you have anything? Okay. Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Thanks. So I think that you convened the special meeting hoping that there would be some way to interact with me, and I think maybe you didn't realize that it had been framed in such a way that I wasn't able to participate. So just to make a brief statement to you now. First, I guess I should acknowledge the public, and I really want to thank you, because I did get your outpouring of support. And I did understand that for you, the central issue was that you wanted services, and you understood that your counselor was advocating for services. I also want to thank Donna, I had a very nice collegial interaction with her quickly here tonight, where we got to sort of sort out, did you have some tension? Did I have tension? I wasn't aware there was an issue between us. And we had our normal sort of professional engagement in this hearing, as we always do. Those are the only kinds of engagements I've ever had with her. So if there was some other tension that made her wonder or worry if those kinds of interactions mean something else, they don't. Those are just questions that I ask on behalf of my constituents. And I also want to hold space for the dispatcher, right? Because he was in a very uncomfortable situation that night, where he's upholding a protocol that I'm not aware of and that councilors are not aware of. And in fact, even as recently as yesterday, I wrote to the council president and said, "Do we have any updates on what the dispatch protocols are, and how we're supposed to relay information to them, and what we do if they don't want to receive that information?" And he's forwarded it to the mayor, and we're waiting to hear what she thinks the protocol is. So I want to make clear that when we put our employees in situations where their service is going to be in conflict with the needs of residents, that will continue to be an uncomfortable situation when they are confronted with a zealous city councillor. And I hope that we will change those policies, but until we do, I don't know what else we can do to address those kinds of situations. I don't think that your special meeting addressed that. And finally, as to the charter and understandings of the charter and state law, of course, we have a different understanding of it. I think that's very clear, and I think you've penned down your understanding of it in your resolution. I maintain that the city council has the sole obligation to ensure that the city of Northampton is complying with all of the duties that are required of this city under law. And the mayor does not hold that obligation. The mayor holds some executive duties, but we hold the entire power of the city for whom everyone in the city works, and we hold that sole obligation to take care of people and make sure that we are not being negligent and we are not endangering them. So that remains my understanding and reading of the charter. And as far as I'm concerned, we remain with a disagreement about that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation that I'm looking forward to. Is Derek in the room? Thank you for your patience. So we have a present, an update on Gateway Fiber's progress on installation and activation of fiber optic network, present, and fiber optic network for Northampton by our Gateway Fiber representative, Derek Leffert, who's the head of Government Affairs. Good evening.
Hey.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity to kind of bring you guys up to speed on what's going on. Just kind of, we were done with Phase 1, so we kind of wanted to come in and do kind of a touch point with folks. You know, we committed to communicating and collaborating with the city and, and the residents long back before we ever even got started. So we want to continue to fulfill those, those promises. And I am Derek Leffert, head of Government Affairs for, for Gateway Fiber. I'm based out of Missouri, but Jen Gannon is here as well. She's here in Massachusetts and handling a lot of the things that are happening day to day with this Massachusetts bill. I want to start by saying thanks to a lot of different people, the city, the staff has been fantastic, I've been great to work with, you know, all the interactions that we've had with the city have been, been very, very fruitful for us, and we're very grateful for, for that. The mayor has been great as well. The citizens have been fantastic in kind of embracing and supporting us as we, as we bring service to the area. And then the chamber's been great to work with, and then the task force that kind of brought all of this to kind of the forefront and really kind of challenged us to... and really kind of challenged us to do what we do on our side, which is bring badly needed service to residents and businesses. So huge thank you. We're very, very grateful for those relationships that we've built and hopeful that we can continue those. As far as the Phase 1 build is concerned, we put in about 207,000 feet of fiber. So that's about 39 miles of fiber that we deployed just in our first phase. And we had, right now, I think we're up to about a little less than 600 subscribers or customers with another 350 or so orders pending that need installation. So we're right around that 900 to 1,000 mark of people that have ordered our service and hope to continue to see that grow. The Phase 2, we're in the process of designing the Phase 2. So Phase 1 is kind of central-ish geographically. And then our Phase 2 would be kind of north and south of that, as well as to the west. So we can provide, if anybody's interested in the specifics in terms of neighborhoods and things like that, we're happy to provide that. But just geographically thinking that it's north, south, and west of where we built Phase 1. We've got 23 applications in for about 2,000 poles in that area. So that kind of gives you the scope of that particular project. We've got about 250 orders already in that. And we expect to start the make-ready process sometime in the summer. We're not exactly sure yet. There's still a lot of things that are kind of pending. But our expectation is that we're going to start the make-ready process in September, in the summer, at some point this summer. As far as community support, we've been out doing various different events. I know we've sponsored a variety of different things and will continue to do that. We do want to make sure that we're investing in the community and we're giving back to the community. So if there's specific things that you guys have an interest in that we can take a look at, don't hesitate to let us know and we'll look at it and get with our marketing team and see if it makes sense and do what we can to support everything going on here in Northampton. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Clemmer?
Yeah, it's just a comment. Yeah, I'm on a bunch of list serves in War II. And I've just seen a lot of people really satisfied with the work and installation and just the way you all handled everything. The one little blip somebody had, I think they needed a plume, you said? Yeah, so they were really happy because you responded right away. They weren't put on hold indefinitely, and you're going to go out and take care of it now. So very good feedback from everything I've seen. So thanks for what you're doing here.
We place a huge emphasis on customer service. I mean, that's handled out of our office in St. Louis. And then, you know, we make sure that, I mean, you look at our reviews online, and there's a reason why we have the customer service reviews. That's a core tenet of who we are as a company. And so appreciate that feedback. And if there's ever any, if you guys have a dissatisfied constituent, more than happy to have a conversation with them, figure out what the issue is. There's always going to be some issues, I think. You know, anytime you do a project of this magnitude and this size, you're probably going to end up making somebody not happy about something. But so far, I think we've been pretty lucky. I do know that we had a couple of kinks in the beginning. I think we had some kind of streetlight issues that we kind of worked through, and I think we're past all that now. So, you know, it was a learning process for us. This was our first market in Massachusetts. So it was a learning opportunity for us, and I think all those things have been resolved. So if you guys ever have any concerns from your constituents or you as a council member, don't hesitate to reach out to me, and we'll get it resolved as quick as we can.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor?
So we've just been hearing good things and people excited. Actually, what we've been hearing most in our office is just questions about when people are going to get connected. And so I know you talked about Phase 1, Phase 2, and you might not be able to answer this. But, you know, for example, I think we got a call this week asking about Ryan Road and Sylvester Road, so sort of farther out from downtown. And so I don't know, is there somewhere where we can see sort of the build-out plans and how you think it's going to, you know, roll out?
That may be a possibility when we, once we get everything designed and engineered on Phase 2. But there's still, it wouldn't do us any good to do that right now because things are kind of still in flux as far as the design. So once we get that finalized, then we could probably share, like, you know, these are the streets that we're going down and that sort of thing, and give you like a ballpark timeline. But in terms of, you know, of knowing that specifically right now, we don't have that because the engineering's not done. But we could potentially do that in the future.
Okay, great. Thanks.
It's a good problem to have that people want the service and we can't get it to them yet. But I mean, we'll get to it as quick as we can. I did want to stress that we are basing a lot of where we're going. As part of the, part of the design is going to be based on where we're getting the pre-orders from, right? So if we know that there is a particular pocket that we're going to have extremely high uptake in, it makes sense for us to go ahead and try to get to that as quickly as we can, right? Because that's getting the resident, the resident service, and it's generating revenue for us. So the pre-orders is very important for folks. So if your constituents are calling or have questions or whatever, don't hesitate to send them to the website and do the pre-order. Again, we can't guarantee like a date of service, but we can certainly, well, we look at that. And that's what we use as part of our design process.
Right. That was actually my question. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank you because I live in Ward, I represent Ward 7 and live there. And a neighborhood had a bunch of questions, and you were very responsive. Yeah, so that was my question because we're far-flung and less populated, close together. We want to make sure that you know that we're interested. I've been trying to tell people to pre-order. But that's basically, I guess, where are you getting the pre-orders that you anticipated? Is it kind of rolling as you saw it would go?
I think our uptake is good. I mean, it could always be better. And I will tell you that the more that we have, the more we can build, right? Because we've got to justify the investment. So the more pre-orders that we have, you know, we can go back and say, look, you know, here's the commitment we're getting from the community. So, you know, obviously, the need is there, the want is there. Once people go on our service, unless they move, it's highly likely that they're going to leave. So that they're, that they're going to leave our service. I mean, once they get it, they're satisfied with it, and we're not really worried about, you know, whether or not they leave. We're going to continue to service them and do everything we can to make sure that they have good service and continue to have good service. But, you know, we want to make sure that folks are getting what they need.
Right. So just to follow up. So for neighborhoods like mine that are kind of on the outskirts, it's, pre-ordering is really the way to get your attention. Okay, I'll focus on that.
The more orders we have coming in, that tells us where we need to focus our resources.
Okay. Counselor Clemmer, yeah?
Yeah, just had another question. So my neighborhood's a new neighborhood, and we have underground wires and everything. So is that more challenging to?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're kind of...
It's unfortunate. You know, the underground installation in Massachusetts is tough, given the soil conditions. So it's not only more difficult, it's more expensive. It's not to say that we can't or won't do it. It's just that if we can get the aerial up and it's, you know, it's an easier process, you know, we're going to probably work on getting that done first before we're able to focus on the underground piece of it.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Okay, Councillors, any other questions? Or Mayor?
No.
I really appreciate you coming down and giving us this update. I was wondering, and I'd like to be able to tell my constituents, so thank you.
Yeah, don't hesitate to reach out if you guys need something from us. You guys, Alan's got my contact information, so don't hesitate to reach out if we can do anything at all.
Right. And so we can reach out to you to find out about proposed areas that, okay, great.
Yep. And if I don't know the answer, I'll get with our construction team and kind of our engineering team and kind of figure out what the answer is.
Okay. Thank you so much, Derek.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Mayor?
We are on to the consent agenda. So are there any removals from the, well, maybe I should read them just, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Counselor Elkins, did you have your hands up?
I was just going to remove the item that we continued.
Oh, yes, thank you. Right.
How about also removing from Park Hill Road, that hearing?
Right. Counselor Elkins said that too. Okay, so that will be removed. Any other removals? Does he usually read them all? Oh, okay. Well, let's see. To be like President Jared, I'll read them before we vote on them as a group with that one removal. Is that the only removal? Yeah. Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Oh, yeah, okay. So we also have the minutes of January 30th, 2025, Joint City Council School Committee Meeting, and February 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Thank you, Laura. Those are very long. B, approve 24.212 Comcast Petition to Install Underground, well, right, Conduit for Cable Service to 130 to 140 Woodland Drive. We're removing that, the next one. And then finally, the 24.224 Knights of Inferno Firefighters MC BNO License Application. Thank you for being here. Okay. So I would look for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Would that want a removal of the Park Hill Road?
Move to approve.
Second it.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Moulton, second by Counselor Labarge.
Okay, for roll call. Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Roth and, oh, Counselor.
Counselor Dubs?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
And Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the Consent Agenda is approved, and we don't, we already just continued the Park Hill Road, so we don't have to do anything with that. Okay. So moving on to financial orders on first reading. We have 25.225 An Order to Establish Water and Sewer Rates for FY 2026. This is on first reading. So we have to decide where we want to refer it to.
Yes, I would move that we refer this to the Consent Agenda for April 3rd.
Okay, so motion made by Counselor Moulton, second by Counselor Labarge. Yeah, I would just say as Finance Chair that because the rates aren't changing, I feel comfortable with it being referred to the Consent Agenda. We have brought that, we've brought the water sewer rates to finance when there's been a change. So I'm fine with that. Any other comments on, make sure I can see the rest of the Councillors. Okay. So we can look for a motion to refer, oh, I'm sorry, we've already had a motion. We can do roll call. Counselor Dubs?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that will be the Consent Agenda for April 3rd? Okay. So moving on, 25.226 An Order to Authorize Payment of Prior Year Invoice. First reading, but there's been a request for two readings to expedite the payment. So I guess we would look for a motion to suspend the rules first, to waive the reading.
I make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second it.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Clemmer, second by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion? Okay. So with no discussion, we can do roll call. Okay. Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And Counselor Dubs? Okay, yeah. Great. Okay. He said yes, right. Okay. So now we can look for a motion to approve tonight.
Motion, yeah. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labarge, second by Counselor Clemmer. I should not eat things with peanut butter secretly? All right. Okay, any discussion?
Well, Counselor, Acting President, well, could we, just for the public's sake, could we hear an explanation of this $105 that the city owes the Registry of Needs?
Yes, thank you. So in 2023, when there was a filing on a property, there was some back and forth, and the city did not receive the invoice for this property. And it came to light on the most recent statement that it was, had not been paid.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions before we vote for them to approve? Okay, roll call. Thank you. Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Dubs?
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on to 25.227 An Order to Authorize Use of $97,000 FY 2026 Capital Appropriation for Lease Instead of Purchase of DHHS Vehicles. First reading, and just, I'll just read the process note. The City Council previously approved an appropriation of $97,176 for Health and Human Services for two-vehicle purchases. By Order 24.194, in order to appropriate $7.4 million free cash to various capital projects. Yes, would you like to just tell us more about that?
Sure. So the order has a lot of information in it. Essentially, so we are moving towards a leasing system for vehicles, which will save us money and also allow us to decarbonize our vehicles much faster than sort of the process we've been going through as we're replacing them when we buy them. And it'll also just provide better resources for the departments. So I want to thank Director Ben Wild for working on this. So this order before you is specifically about Department of Health and Human Services vehicles. And these, there were two vehicles that were approved in the Capital Improvement Program for pretty much the same amount, slightly more, I think, in the SIP. And so it was designated as two vehicles in the SIP and in the order. We are actually able to get four vehicles for the same amount with this leasing program that we're doing. But since it had been designated as two vehicles in the order that you approved, we need to come back for approval because I had asked for that specificity in the order. And now because of that, we need to come back to you to change it so that it is for four vehicles instead of two. And...
Should be careful. If it was 97,176, then that's what that should say.
Oh, okay. I thought the SIP order was slightly, hold on, it's on the agenda. Hold on one second.
It's slightly more, right?
Yeah, the... Wait, hold on. In the...
97,176.
Right, 97,176.
It should be 97,176.
Oh, okay.
That was my mistake.
Can we ask for a Scrivner's Error Correction on the order before you? It should be 97,176, which is the amount that it was on the SIP.
Oh, right.
Yes. So does that make sense? So we now actually can get four vehicles, but because we had designated two, we had to come back and change that.
Okay.
Could you repeat that, Mayor, as a price again?
Sure. $97,176.
Thank you.
Okay, right. So we can change that for the next agenda since it's first reading. So, yeah, no problem. Councillors, anybody have, yes, Counselor Moulton?
And some of these vehicles will be used for the Division of Community Care?
Do you know which ones? So, yes. So actually, there, the experiment that Dr. Wild spoke to you all about having a vehicle pool. And so the DHHS Department of Health and Human Services is going to be part of that pool. So instead of putting in two vehicles, they'll be putting in four vehicles that will be available for the Department of Health and Human Services, but also any other department that's in that pool, which we expect it to be the Central Services and the Assessors. So they would have access to these vehicles.
Just make sure I can see everybody. Okay, Councillors, any more questions or comments on this one?
Yes, I do.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I think this is the right way to go. I mean, we're getting four vehicles, and before we're getting two. The only thing I'm questioning is four vehicles... The only thing I'm questioning is four vehicles, community care, and I had concerns with that, why four? And then we have probably other departments that could use the other two. Do you know what I'm trying to say? That way we're saving money because if another department might need, you know, a vehicle or two, we have.
So these are not just for the Division of Community Care. These also would be used by, for health inspection and for other DHHS uses. But as Director Nardi was just saying, these vehicles are going to be part of a vehicle pool program that we're starting. It's like an experiment that we're going to start where there are multiple departments that will have access to all of these vehicles. And so essentially what you're saying is true, there are other departments that will be able to use them as well.
I think it's the right way to go. Thank you.
Sure. Yes, Councilor Clemmer?
I'm on NESC, so I was fortunate to be involved in these discussions and it sounds like a really great idea. And instead of vehicles just sitting around and people, departments having vehicles that they don't always use, you know, this would be a common pool of apartments, departments that need similar type vehicles. So like the police and DPW, they have very specialized vehicles, so they wouldn't be able to benefit from this. But departments that use, you know, probably just regular kind of cars or whatever, SUVs, they could all share them. So I think it's really good and it's cost-saving and it's energy-saving. So, you know, I want to thank Dr. Wile for helping us out with this and coming up with a plan.
I'll just add that because we've already vetted this, you know, it's in the same spirit, in fact, it's better we're getting four, I'm fine with having this referred to the consent agenda.
Yeah, we'll make that motion.
Okay.
Refer to consent agenda for April 3rd.
No, second.
Okay, Council Moulton motioned, second by Councilor Clemmer. And I guess roll call on referral? Councilor LaBarge. Councilor LaBarge?
Yes.
Councilor Maori?
Thank you.
Yes. Councilor Moulton?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Dubs?
Yes.
Councilor Elkins?
Yes.
And Councilor Clemmer?
Yes.
Okay.
I was considering trading on that.
Yeah, so that'll be at the April 3rd meeting. Okay, now we're on to 25.228, an order to appropriate $244,883 from free cash to the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund on first reading. One more to say, anything? Any questions about that?
No, it's just a transfer.
I'm happy to explain it if anyone would like.
Well, it's, it's based on our.
Yes, so as requested by the council, we're rolling in the $50,000 to the base of the Northampton Public Schools budget from the additional one-time appropriation of the $294,883.3 that the city council voted on this month. So that came from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. So as was discussed at that meeting, the $50,000 is for recurring operating expenses and will become somewhere around $200,000 in the next year, which will be built into the budget. So as was also discussed at the council meeting, we're requesting to essentially switch the remaining $244,883, which the council voted as one-time funds, to, to use the undesignated fund balance instead of the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund, so we're swapping them.
Which is what President Jarrett was.
He had asked if I would be, if I would be amenable to that.
Okay. Councilors, any other comments about this one? Thank you, this is a big deal. So, yeah, so referring, let's see, first, yeah, we need to refer this. Oh, Councilor Elkins?
Oh, I was just going to move to refer it to the consent agenda. It's the product of a, 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 a,